Wave and smile pretty.
We want to do Mr. Soggy right after the pledge, or? You okay with that?
That's fine.
All right.
Call the media, the Ramsey County Commissioner's Order, please join me in the pledge. A pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to thank everybody for coming today. And before we get into our regular agenda, we'd have a special recognition. Twenty-seven years of service. And Mr. John Soggy of the Ramsey County Highway Department. We hereby present you with this certificate. And check for some appreciation. John's last day was Saturday, I believe, the thirtieth of November. Kind of thing, so tw- after twenty-seven years. And many, many miles of road grader. Hey, your job of service, well done. We appreciate everything you've done for the county and the citizens of Ramsey County, and we'd like to hereby present you with this. So if we could come up and all join around for a little. You know, a while back, we had a citizen come in and said, complaining about various things. One of the things they said was, hey, you know, you folks on the west side, the county have the best roads in the county. And then I wanted to say, it's only because we have the best meetings, man. Thank you. Appreciate it, John. Thank you. The pitchers? All right.
Still calling.
Speed dial. Don't go far. Thank you. With that, the next item on the agenda would be the board reorganization. First item up would be the nomination for chairman.
Nominate Lee.
Okay. We have a nomination. Do we have any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Period none. So we cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Lee Gessler as chairman. Once, twice. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll turn things over to you.
All right.
Like the, uh, Mr. Mr. Campbell. Oh, we actually have a second on that? And now we're good?
Okay.
Nominations for vice chairman.
I nominate Mr. Volk, Commissioner.
Are there any other nominations?
I would second that. And I'd move that we, no further nomination, be cast and we cast a unanimous ballot for Mr. Volk.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Assignment portfolios. So the ones you had, Jeff, those are the ones that go with the chairman?
Yep.
Great.
Congratulations.
I said congratulations.
So there's an extra one on there, uh, veteran service and VSO, same thing, so.
So I guess we need to.
We need to vote on that to, for him to take that over, that pretty much goes with the chair.
I think that pretty much goes with the chair, but if we want to go ahead.
I'll make the motion, that's the same one that's showed here on our portfolio list, stay with the chair.
Okay.
Can I check it back?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. So I guess we know that the sheriff, tax director, and county agent all need to be dispersed. Amongst you guys, or are we just going to switch?
I could take those on.
Okay.
Be happy to.
There.
I'll make a motion that Jeff takes sheriff, tax, director, and county agent.
Second. Is there a second? Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. That must be it for the portfolios.
Mr. Chairman, I got one.
Okay.
I'm also a holder for the Hardee Center. And they have their meetings on Mondays, and if plane doesn't work for me, I'll ask Commissioner Wilk if he would take that, and he agrees.
Okay. That, that's just. That's not a portfolio, right? That's a. That's a board, board, board appointed.
Yeah.
So we doing that next meeting?
So we're all on agreeance to make, to keep the portfolios the same as they show on here, besides the ones that we changed.
Well, unless somebody else.
I just want to make sure that if someone wants to take someone, I'm just throwing it out there, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Cause I'm good with that also.
Okay. So we'll do the board appointments next meeting. Is that correct, Candy?
Yeah.
You got one more Monday left.
Approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Volk seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Approval of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, it was. Did you pick one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Approval of the financial reports.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Approval of treasures checks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Treasures checks approved. Approval of the agenda. Any additions or corrections?
And we should add, add that. The narcotics.
Yep.
Task force overpayment.
That'd be under new business then. Okay. Anything else?
I'd move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Sarah, you're up. Touch a little dude in the front there.
There we go. Um, so just a little update on, uh, things have been going on with extension. Um, as you know, we've got an opening for a full-time administrative assistant and 4-H assistant position. We've had a few interviews and we'll be making an offer real soon, so we'll keep you guys updated on what happens there. Uh, we have a few things going on at the courthouse coming up on Thursday. We've got about fifty people signed up for an outdoor winter arrangement workshop, that'll be in the armory. And, um, rent, uh, Lake Region Extension Roundup is coming up, January eighth and ninth. And we have fresh, hot off the press here, um. So. Um, so you can see everything that we've got going on with, with roundup, that'll be a full two days, we've got a lot of speakers lined up. Well over fifty booths and, um, breakfast, lunch, so uh, if you're in the courthouse, I recommend not to leave because parking is hard to get, so just come and eat with us, it's uh, completely, uh, free and, um, taken on by many of our sponsors, so we thank them very much. Uh, our 4-H shooting sports, we've had our instructors meetings and instru- or registrations have been open for air rifle and archery, so air rifle will be happening January and February, and then archery, March and April, and that will be all downstairs in the memorial building.
This, sorry, I got a question. This sponsorship, that's what runs it?
Yes, 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 we, uh, run entirely on sponsorships, so you can see all of the many sponsors that are sponsoring the event.
Yeah, thanks for the.
Yes, yes, it's a. Um, let's see. Um, Lindsay is also, she's going to be starting recertification of private pesticide license training, she's going to be offering four in Ramsey County this year, and she'll be starting in February, so those will be going on um, either here at the Armory or, uh, throughout the county. Also, um. Anybody's interested, we've got some, we got a field the fork program through extension, and we will be having some webinars coming up um, in the new year, so that's just kind of a taste of some of the other things that we do with extension, so. Does anybody have any questions on any happenings with NDSU extension?
And I know we've, uh, approved this before and, but I want to make it official, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that the doors to the memorial building um, between the two buildings be open for public access between the, for the, uh, extension roundup.
I was stuck in that motion. Been a motion and a second to make sure the doors are open between the two facilities, any other discussion?
Were there, were there any other doors that were needed for that, or just those?
Um, just the two in between, and then, um, you know, I don't know what, what your thoughts are on as people enter the courthouse, and if they, if some of them choose, would you rather just have everybody use the elevators that day, or the option to use the, um, the stairs, then that door would need to be open as well.
Right.
So I, it's totally up to you. Um, there's going to be a lot of people, I don't know if that would inundate the elevators.
No, that might be a good idea, I know those people still walk in and assume that they can use the stairs, so that might be a.
I'd be open with that.
I think just for the day, or two days.
For that particular day, or days.
Right, January eighth and ninth would be.
So. I'll go ahead and amend my motion.
Oh, second.
Include that.
Right. And amended, amendment to the motion, any other discussion?
We'll make sure that departments are aware of that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Anything else, Lindsay? Sorry, Sarah.
That I can think of, unless anybody. I know, I, yeah, I was just going to say that I know, um, with Cindy retiring, we just want to thank you all for your support, and I know she really appreciated all of your support with, um, the transition and all of her thirty years, so we do appreciate that.
Thanks, Sarah.
Yep.
Sarah. Mr. Eisler.
Good morning. Um, I just wanted to come talk to you today about not asking for more office space, but there's a good likelihood that we close the family planning clinic, um, just due to funding. Um, we've added a few positions with, uh, different grants, um, Blaine's aware of, but I'm asking the commission if it would be okay if public health paid for in the family planning clinic, turning it into three offices, there's, there's a wall there right now you walk through, so it doesn't, it's not conducive to turn it into two offices, um, but if we carpeted it and if we paid to add a wall and a doorway, to turn it into two offices instead of walking through it.
Something that Roger would have to be in on to make sure that everything's doable.
I think we took a look at it, and I think everything is doable, I don't think there's any asbestos removal or anything like that, so I think it'd be our, pretty easy.
Straightforward.
Straightforward. Nothing with this building, I don't think it's easy, but.
Yeah, it wouldn't be moving any electrical or, or.
Say, don't blow the electricity.
It's just a precaution.
Yeah, sounds like it. And I think so, so.
And you're not blocking off any ventilation and things like that, so.
No, and then.
I thought it looked reasonable when you brought it to me.
And then adding some carpet squares, because this building, when you talk with this floor, everything just carries everywhere.
Entertain the motion.
I'll make that motion that we allow the public health to do that renovation at their expense.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Buckmire.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, I believe that Candy sent out the contract that will be coming up with our independent contractor for the indexing. Um, there is no change in the cost per document, the only change is I would like to try to get this project done in the next two years. Uh, right now, we have about seventy-three thousand, or seventy thousand eight hundred and sixty-one documents yet to do. Um, last year, she did thirty-three thousand three hundred and thirty-three documents. I'm hoping in the next two years, then, it'll be complete. Um, the budget the last couple of years have been twenty-five thousand dollars. This year, um, we got it right down to twenty-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. So for the next two years, I believe it was approved in my budget for thirty thousand, thirty thousand dollars for the next two years should take care of that seventy thousand documents. So. Yes.
And these documents are some of them quicker now than we're not having to.
Well, they're actually getting, uh, I don't want to say quicker, it's a little bit more difficult to read, that's why last year she kind of raised the price a little bit. So a lot of them are handwritten, starting handwritten now, we are back to actually nineteen sixteen right now. So, the contract, if you are, uh, approve the contract, I will sign it and send it to her, and then she would sign it and send it back.
Hold it. So that's in her budget, I'm willing to make the motion to keep moving on and try to finish this over in the next two years.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Been a long project.
It has been, since two thousand twelve.
Probably. Can't wait for two years to go by, probably.
Yes, it'd be nice to be done.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning. Uh, start off with Butler did get the exhaust filter put on our second machine. Uh, the bill for it was five thousand nine hundred and four dollars forty-seven cents. And I guess I'd entertain a motion to pay that bill to Butler.
I'll make that motion to pay that.
Second. Motion and second to pay Butler five thousand nine hundred and four dollars forty-seven cents. Any discussion?
Kevin, wasn't that different on your list of bills?
It was, yeah, I'm not sure why it went up, but it is a little bit higher. I, I think what the deal is, they get remanufactured mufflers or filters, whatever you want to call this thing. And I suppose depending on what the remanufactured muffler had done to it, the price is different, that's my only thought there.
Well, I thought the one on your, the list of bills was higher than.
Oh, that, uh, the list of bills has some other parts, so.
So that's not the, not just for that filter, okay?
No, right, correct.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other discussion? Motion two, or, uh, all in favor of motions, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
KLJ has an invoice for the design work that they did for South Pinewood Township on their shoulder widening project on eighty-ninth Avenue. I think that's pretty well complete now, there's still some environmental stuff to go through before we're actually get the bid, but anyway, entertain a motion to pay KLJ.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Uh, this is that, um, money that we received from the state again.
That's what I was going to ask, making sure that that's what that was. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
And we also have an invoice from True North Steel for a cover that Freshwater Township ordered. Uh, they needed it right away. And, uh, it was delivered within a week or something like that, so. I was not in on this, I, I can't answer, I assume since they wanted it so fast. I mean, they wanted it, this was maybe three weeks ago when they got it.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'd like to entertain a motion to pay True North Steel.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
That's all I have, unless you have something for me.
You had to reopen John's job, uh.
Yep, and like, we haven't interviewed anybody since the first go-around, but now it's open until filled, there's no deadline. And yesterday, yeah, yesterday we started advertising for Devil's Lake position also.
In the time being, it's stormy.
Yeah, yeah. It's going to get really difficult when the Devil's Lake person, if we don't have that position filled, we'll have two open, but we'll get through it somehow. Do overtime somewhere, basically, but.
Anything else for Kevin? Thank you, if you want. For the water board. Sounds like a fix to me.
Yeah.
Wouldn't even make you do the pen when you could. You could, you could do that.
Morning, Brian.
Morning. As far as water board is, uh, I think our biggest thing we're worrying about this month is, uh, who's responsible for the Channel A Bridge, and the discussion came up with Kevin's name a few times already. Uh, for anybody that isn't aware of Channel A, one of the main assessment areas that brings water down through the area, there was a shortcut across Highway Two, and there's a county road that did not have a bridge before, and it's got a bridge now with Channel A, and trying to find documentation as to where the, who's responsible for the bridge, I guess. It's a county road or township road. So.
Just so we make it clear, because that could get really ugly.
Yeah, I, I thought that was our reason Ramsey County Water Board, um, responsibility for that.
Now, it was a, it was a big project, we did that, braids, you know, to get some of our, um, fully, by certain bearing. There was three structures up there at the same time. It was a big project. John Wilson on his term did the work, but we could never find any agreements with any guy anywhere, we booked every place. But in the early days, when I started, the water board consisted of, they owned the apartment project, so that's really what it was. Yeah. Show that.
This is the bridge of the south end of Dry Lake there. So that channel is water. Yes, we actually own this property on each side of it, so. So it makes sense that the bridge would be included in the water board and part of the project. I guess it's finding the documentation to want to be.
And what's wrong with it?
Um, I believe the bridge is fine, it needs a little work around the edges of it, the road, right away, right around it.
Yeah, that's the road, road, possible, kind of the bridge.
I guess. Did you say there was a little bit on, uh, leaning up to it that started to wash away, or something right now? So a little bit of, you know, irregular maintenance that needs to be done to it, we're just figuring out to.
It's almost like the road was, it had a cut, instead of having the road built up, you know, like a crown, it was cut through on hill.
Yep.
To make it fit that bridge. You know, so now with that cut, there's not very good ditch, so every time we get a really bad rain, it washes it out.
Hmm.
You know, because I, with the cut, it wasn't pushed back far enough, you know, like today's engineering would be.
Yep, so the, it's, maintenance to fix some of that, so probably.
Yeah, it didn't cut back to whatever.
Yeah, I believe it's big.
Whatever the reason is, you know. And when that happened, that means the township, whatever, did you say, they don't, uh, washed out. So which township does that ground, or does that drive?
Since the time. That's the way they help me out, the south side.
Sometimes, everybody's never, again, if you, if you look at that room, the south side was cut back, and they did, but the other side, that's where it's, it's banged up because of the way it's cut, they push that back, otherwise I don't think you're going to fix it correctly. Maybe it's just an engineer's.
And it's just an engineer thing, but until you cut that back and leave that opening because of making such a ditch to create that water to go in there so fast. You know, unless they can rock it.
Yeah. They rock it so that you don't get that wash.
So as far as the water board is concerned, if it's our responsibility, we're in the point where we're redoing the Channel A assessment right now. Making sure it's all correct and able to be, uh, the proper list to be put out to the county for assessment if needed. Cause we're, right now, we're working on all the culverts that go into Channel A. They're starting to rest out. We just replaced one. Some of them are twenty-some feet deep, so they're, I believe it was, uh, just under twenty thousand that we paid for the one culvert that we did, instead of, there's nine to ten more of them. So we've got a little bit of an expense, but Channel A assessment, once it's ready, I mean, can afford to pay for all that without any issues. So we're just getting all the costs together for next year when we're ready to turn in the assessment list so we can cover all these expenses.
And there's no extra help for that, if you ask as far as you know?
Uh, we've never looked into anything, I guess. Our first thought was if it's Channel A, how do we do it?
Adds up pretty fast, you know, because you're looking at twenty thousand dollars in a culvert, possibly.
No, that was the total cost of the one that we did. But, you know, several of them are rather substantial amount of culvert. By the time you go through a thirty-foot cut to, to get down there, twenty to thirty foot, I believe our engineer just told us today, so. There'll be a couple hundred thousand dollars worth of work needed out there. And the Channel A is a little bit different than our other assessments, uh, our legal advice we got was figure out what you're going to need so you can justify the amount that you're going to assess. So that's the way we're approaching it right now versus our other ones. We can just put on an amount to make it, uh, get a little money built up and then do the work.
Have you ever had an engineer look at that and, uh, present a cost share request to the state water commission?
Uh, no, we had not thought of that yet. That was something that would be feasible and we've got until next summer to work with it. So that might be something we should consider.
It's going to be substantial amount of money.
So to alleviate the who owns what, who's responsible for that, we have the state's attorney draft something, so there is something on record, so.
I mean, I can look into that. I, obviously, we don't represent the water board itself, uh, but I can certainly do some digging on top of this.
Turn your, turn your mic on. Oh, it's dead? Never mind.
So I can certainly look into that and see if there's anything that I can find. It sounds like there's not much documentation to come up with, but I can look into the legal where it lies as far as if the water board has been claiming it for so long and everybody understands that that's the case, we can at least move forward with certainty that that's who everybody understands it to be and have it established from here on out.
So would that be up to the water board then?
I, I mean, I'm not asking you to work, you know, somebody else. It's, I'm just asking who.
It, since it's kind of a mix of county funds and the water board working together, uh, there's no harm in me looking into it to make sure that we are all on the same page. And if anything, just making sure that there's documentation stating that the water board does own it. So we don't have this question again in another twenty-five years at this point. But I'm happy to get that looked into and drafted.
Bridges usually fall under you no matter even if they're on a township road or not. Is that, hold that.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Okay, well, that's probably something we need to clear up.
That's, uh, you would have thought there would be something visible in the files on that as it is, but we haven't found anything. I think Kevin said he hasn't found anything, so it should be clarified.
Size of that project, that you would have thought that'd be one of the first things they would have, or made sure it was done, so. Okay, anything else, Brian?
Uh, you know, as far as the water board, you know, we're just continuing conversations with different projects that people are bringing in. Uh, I guess we've going to be discussing, uh, whether it's, uh, time to send in a letter of bearing with the county and townships have sent to the Attorney General about clarifying some of the issues. As to who owns and is responsible for areas around the lake. So that'll be a discussion we have later. Uh, other than that, it's just our basic finishing up all the projects from the year and discussing next year's stuff, so.
Be good. Anything else for Brian? All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Unfinished business, I guess. Comprehensive water plan, that's, did have a public meeting and tried to get the gist of wherever, what people are thinking now as opposed to what they were thinking fifteen years ago, I guess. I don't know. Um, something that I haven't followed up with Brian on, but, um, I guess people are just looking for information right now, so we're going to try and help them find that. Any other old business?
Uh, just, uh, to add to Commissioner Gessner's recap, uh, Mister Paul asked for the letter that, uh, the state attorney's office had sent to the attorney general's office. Uh, I checked with Mister Cummings. He didn't feel that there was anything, uh, wrong with making sure that the general public here had that recap of where uh, we believe the law to be as far as the lake goes, ownership rights and such things. So, uh, the hope is that Mister Paul can distribute that letter. It's, is what I believe is a good starting point for any conversations about the legality of the situation for the general, uh, information and education of those who care to read it.
Okay, anything else? Any other business? New business, approval of the twenty-twenty-five meeting dates. In your packets, there's a list of dates that Candy submitted.
Basically going off to Tuesday, right Candy? Uh, I don't think anything's really changed. We don't have to worry about eviction. I'll make a motion that the dates are what they are.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the meeting date, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Schedule set. Letter of transfer. It's also in your packet, I believe. That for the ender. So it looks like we need to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to the ender and document preservation fund. That's what, uh, that was just talking about.
Yep, that's where that contract is being paid out of.
Move to approve the transfer.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the transfers, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, then we have the letter, uh, from the narcotics, narcotics task force with the city.
And Spencer's here.
Yeah. Spencer, you need to say nay or you just, pretty straightforward. Okay. Uh, it looks like there was a county software problem or personal error, operator error, which I completely understand. Um, so it looks like we were overpaid. Task force was overpaid forty-one thousand five hundred and three dollars, three cents. Which the city is asking us to return. Uh, they're supporting documents with the letter. Does anybody have any questions?
Who's software was messed up, ours or the city?
There's a combination of the software error with the cash allocation and user error, this interpretation. Just an administrative error and wanted to clean it up by the end of twenty-twenty-four. Met with Candy and Travis, uh, last week and we all seem to be on the same page as to what happened and corrected, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or?
We just need to cut them a check then, basically. Yeah, I'll make that motion that we pay that amount that was overpayment of forty-one, five oh three, oh three.
Yep. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Motion to repay the funds to the city for the narcotics task force, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Visitors and delegations, sheriff, you got anything? Seeing as though there isn't anybody around, any announcements from the commissioners? Seeing none? Well, during the meeting.
Is Roger anything?